Yeah.
We're going to call the meeting to order. Six oh six. So can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
And maybe fundraise for those that need it.
Yeah.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on creation, under God, indivisible, in the unity and justice of our own.
Okay, so a non-public session can be called at any time. And I guess we'll just move right on to public comment. You want to set the timer? Thank you. And now on to the budget. Do you want me to start?
We'll give a little, just a little mystery.
Yeah.
We do. Because we've coordinated this budget one time last month. We got a feel for it, and then this is our first FACC meeting. And probably helpful if we all introduce ourselves, just in case there's some new cases. I'm Esther Adel, Associate Superintendent, and I work with Stratum. I'm the board.
Shadler, Assistant Director of Finance and Operations at the Central Ops.
Heidi Hansen, I'm a member of the Finance Advisory Committee.
Joey Anderson from the Stratum Select Board.
Eric Herring, School Board Member.
Kate Davis, School Board Member.
Ken Otto, School Board Member.
Jennifer Schacher, School Board.
Erica Seating, Ready, School Board.
Kate Lucas, Building Principal.
Kate Beland, Assistant Principal.
Selena Malora, Director of Special Ed.
Lester Goff, Retired Stratum.
Thanks, everyone, for coming. This is our first just official workshop with FACC members. So I sent the email out so you could take a look at it, and we have seen what this proposed budget is first blush looking like. The process for us is administration creates a budget. We meet at the SAU level. I think we've had about three or four times, and then we meet with Superintendent for a bit of time to continue to look at lines and get explanations and rationalizations for increases or decreases on our follow-up lines. And then, once that's finalized and Superintendent gives us a little approval, we move on and present it to the board, usually in that November timeline, which is what we did this year. And then we start meeting with FACC in December and work through that. So we're prepared for the public hearing warrant presentation. Then the board can adopt if I did after that public hearing. If there's adjustments that need to be made, et cetera. Before that, from these kinds of inputs and meetings, we'll do that. And you can see those, what that changes, those changes would be. And then, obviously, we have a public hearing. And if there's adjustments that need to be made after that, before the first town meeting, we also have that process. So the final budget really isn't final until the board adopts it after the public hearing. So there's lots of conversations and adjustments and times to make changes or leave things as they are and ask for why they are over the next couple of months. And I tried to send you all those dates in that email a couple of times. So if you should have those, I will send it out again. Anytime we make revisions to the budget, I will send that out again to everybody so you can see what has changed or if there's any changes to the budget before our next meeting. So that's kind of how the process works at the SAU level. And now we kind of turn it over to Kate and the rest of the board to facilitate any questions you might have. That's our first initial look. We did print out what we call the budget with notes. So if you see a large increase or decrease, you should be able to see some notes or explanation as to why that line is that way or what's included in that number. When we give this at the town meeting, we do not give them the one with notes. We give them just lines, and then Kate usually does some kind of presentation. I'm hoping this year, we can talk with the board and maybe have the board present the budget with support from Kate because it truly is the board's budget. And with the turnover on the board, you may want to do that is on the budget that you approved. Because that is the normal process. So that will be a conversation that I just want you to think about, we can have later. But at that town meeting, someone will present the budget along with the backup to the audience. And then they vote that night, as you know, because we're still on a town meeting, which is great, not in SP2, which is a little bit different process.
There is this question. So the FACC, are they elected or volunteers? And is this everybody here?
Yes. David Emanuel, who was the town moderator, appoints to FACC folks. And so I know Lester and Heidi have done it since I've been working with Stratum. And this is, Joe, new to this process this year. In the past, other people have rotated in and out. But really, it's up to the moderator and David Emanuel to appoint members. I don't think it's a vastly sought-after position from my. When I've asked David if he wants to add anyone new or anyone to share information, but they aren't elected, they're appointed.
Okay.
It's been helpful for continuity's sake, too, to have, like Heidi's returning or Lester's returning because they've been here to hear, at least in my time, this is the fifth year, that they've been here to hear, like, the rationale of, like, what goes to top priority or what things we felt should be changed. And I think continuity is helpful because it's been connected over five years. So this will be the fifth year.
Yeah, the only other thing I would like to add, if it's okay, is I know Lester's going to ask me about metrics and what drives this budget. So Kate and her team did a great presentation in, no, actually, in the end of October, on all the data around academic and social emotional growth and areas that we need to work on. So you'll see some adjustments in this budget around SEL. I mean, it's the only adjustment of personnel. Based on the metrics that were presented in the growth academic and social emotional learning at that October meeting. So that drove some of these lines in that budget, as well as what's needed. As you'll see, a large increase in technology. That's a reflection of the data and what kids need to access their full learning environment. So we did use metrics, and I want to just be upfront. And I'm doing it after the question, Lester.
Can't wait.
That being said, that's all I have, and there's no to any other questions.
I think you had said that there was an increase since the last copy. Can you explain that a little bit?
Yes. You'll notice in the safety and security line, we put an increase in twenty, is that right? Ten here.
I think it was ten.
Ten here, twenty in Excel. We are under some investigations that we may need to change our card access system. Apparently, there's some software out there that kids can, you know, you have the gas card places that copy your card. Apparently, they can also do that with our key cards.
Wow.
Which then they could have access to the building. And it gets logged in as a teacher's, whoever key card they copied. And so we're aware that that technology is out there. We want, we just need to, we're trying to be preventive and cautious about that coming. It's cropped up in our older kids, at middle and high school, the talk around this and some testing through our tech department that they do exist and they can do it. They can copy the card, the technology. It's not sold in the United States, but you can get it from overseas. You can order it online for about $300, through one device we're aware of. And so we're trying to stay ahead of that. So that's why, it's not an exact quote, but it's close to cover the cost. It would cover the cost, but we did want to add it in at this session. As we get more information, if there's a little reduction, I would certainly reflect that in the budget, but I wanted to get it in there because it may come up as an issue that we would have to address.
And there was one adjustment in food services under equipment replacement. All the equipment in the cafeteria is 32 years old. It was the original when the building came in. And there's a boiler that heats all the water, and several of the things that are used every single day. And a few years ago, we knew it was on its way out, as are many things. And we had an original quote, and everything has gone up with inflation. I asked Ian to get another quote, and it came in a bit higher, so it was adjusted by $5,000. It had been at fifteen for equipment, and now it's at twenty.
Okay.
So the two changes that you saw.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. I guess, do we want to open up? Do people have questions that they would like to ask? Clarification on anything? Feel free to jump in.
Catherine, did you say the boiler is in? I'm sorry, the boiler replacement is in the actual budget?
Yeah, we put it in the food service line. I think it's under, let's see. Yeah, if you could look, it's the very last page, Heidi, fifteen of fifteen. So replacement of equipment before this budget that had read, I think, fifteen thousand or sixteen thousand, and now it's twenty-one thousand. The new quote is five thousand more than it was before.
And is that a different boiler than the building's boiler?
Yes, it's just for the, it heats the, it's used to heat, like, the hot water in the cafeteria, in the kitchen, actually. I shouldn't say the cafeteria, but it services, like, for all the ovens, the machine they use to make the pasta. Like, it services those pieces of equipment. It keeps them warm and up to temperature and cook.
I also want to point out that the main drivers of the 8.8% increase, one of them is our health guarantee maximum rate. It came out of the health insurance company, which is a contractual issue. So we can't negotiate that cost at all until it's negotiations around a contract again. It was an increase of 15.6%. So that's a huge increase and driver of the costs, as well as, remember, the board did approve adding the extra hours for parents so they could service kids beginning and end of the day. That's reflected in this budget. It wasn't reflected in the last budget because we did it after the budget was approved. So that's why our budget's tight this year. But it is in this budget, those extra hours, which is also a fairly large increase from the last budget. And then our technology line, due to pandemic and extensive use of kids using the equipment, that cycled out quicker than we anticipated. So we needed, usually, we do a kind of a five-year plan and rotate it out over, you know, so many, every year. That was a larger number this year because of the pandemic. Those were used pretty hard and went back and forth in a multitude of places, to grandmas and grandfathers and aunts and uncles and everywhere else to be used, and in cars and backpacks. They just had more awareness here than they normally would, teaching remotely over the past couple of years. So those are really the largest drivers of the increases.
Esther, can I just ask? I think it's the security ad, it was on, it's on page 12. Towards the bottom, add 10, 10K. Where's that other 8K? I think I feel like difference.
It was radio, I think it was radios and, do you remember, Kate?
Yeah, if you look at.
Your last point was the addition, I was just trying to figure out the absolute.
The 10K was the access point issue.
Yeah.
The additional.
And then, I think we're still, like, we're like eighteen different between what we saw last and this one. So the other eight is walkie-talkie?
It should be eighteen.
Is it not? I think the last one I saw was.
It should be an increase of 10.
No, if you look at the note section, Eric, the very last thing says add 10,000 per Esther.
Yeah.
So it was, that would have been just that.
Okay, not a huge deal. I'm just looking at my copy from last time. And I think I saw budget total 23, 24, 14, 530. And here I'm just seeing 14, 548.
What can you do, help me out?
So I'm just looking at the totals. So page 15.
Oh, you're looking total budget.
Total budget. So I'm just trying to figure.
They also, they put in the food service.
That was the eight, the other eight?
Yes.
Okay, got it. I just want to make sure I understood. Thank you.
Six grand, and there's actually differential in the I-ready costs of.
I-ready is the math program.
Can I ask one more, just how this is allocated? It's on 10, page 10. It's the professional services, professional development.
What line, Eric?
Uh, the 50, 321, 520321.
Yep.
Professional services, professional development. Well, it's more of a specific question, maybe, but pickup patrol, JAM software, like, those are like technologies, platforms. Just wondering how that's allocated under that particular budget line.
So those are professional services we hire out. So in addition to, like, the software stuff, you have the services of the company. Yeah, the consults, so that's how to put it under that. I think it's under that in all of the SAU budgets. That's where it's put.
Okay, and then E-rate, obviously, is where we're going to get grant money potentially. E-rate, that is, we're paying somebody to help us as a consultant potentially to run an E-rate?
I believe that comes as consolidated through all of the SAU, and we pay our percentage of that. And we have a lot of these that are consolidated through the SAU, so the price is reduced. Understood. We use, it's used through all the buildings or schools.
Got it. As it relates to E-rate, just out of curiosity, it will, we may be awarded a grant for E-rate. How does that get dispersed? How does that affect the budget, just generally speaking?
It does the percentage back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And some are specific to what the buildings do. So if a building did a big project, like Exeter High School, put in all-new connecting devices, they would get that.
Proportionality.
Connected to that.
Okay.
Stratum wouldn't get a piece of that because they didn't do that work.
Sure.
E-rate is also.
Right, you have to do it.
Particular jobs. So if Stratum did a big job, they might get a bigger chunk proportionally because that's the job they did.
Right.
So there's a general kind of E-rate, and then there's specific jobs that we also can apply for, which we do and get a return on.
Right, understood. Thank you.
So is this the first year after the contract, since the new contract was signed for the teachers?
Teachers, yes.
And then what about for instructional aides?
That is stagnated in here because that's negotiated this year, the parent contract in current negotiations. So that'll be a separate warrant. The board will discuss that next week. It's been negotiated, and so they will vote to either approve that negotiated document or not. Once they hopefully approve it, then we will show the impact of that also. But it'll be a separate warrant, Heidi.
So it actually, in the actual budget, that the voters will see, there will be no change under the budget change because it's a separate warrant article, is that correct?
Well, there's an increase because of the hour changes. Remember the half, the hour? So you see an increase in here.
Oh, Kate was just mentioning.
Because of the hour changes. Yeah, so that's why there's an increase in this line.
I see. So that will stay.
That will stay. But you will see the salary and other things negotiated, dollars things reflected in the separate warrant article if it's approved by the board.
Okay.
That has been ratified by the union, but the board has not approved that yet.
Got you.
So the next time you see the budget, if they approve it, we'll have that separate document and see the impact of that also.
So in years past, I typically go through each page and just highlight anything that was significant, up or down, kind of like I did with you guys in November. Just, I do the same thing for FAC, and I don't know if that would be helpful. Because in the past, that's what we've done, just for the first read with FAC. And then you guys come back with questions, or you actually have passed even emailed them to me before the next meeting so I can have the answers specific to any questions that you might have. I don't know if that works for you guys as a board, if you're comfortable with that same process, or you'd rather not.
That would be great.
Yeah.
So on the first page, I would start with that first regular instructional teacher's salary, only because I think when you look at the budget change of $95,000, it looks like we are suggesting that we hire another teacher. We are actually reducing a classroom teacher, we are proposing, let me rephrase that. We are proposing that we reduce a classroom teacher for next year. Our enrollment numbers have shifted, and our bubble class is in the older grades now. So when they're younger, smaller class sizes, it's more parallel, as we know. And now that they're going to be, our bubble class will be in fifth grade next year. We don't need six teachers, five will be sufficient for that enrollment. So that's reduced one teacher. However, because the teachers did have a new contract this year, that's why you see that $95,000 change. So I just wanted to be clear about that so it wasn't misleading, that people understood that we were, you know, closely analyzing our enrollment and being responsive to that. The salaries of regular instructional aides does go back to what Esther and I had talked about. We were fortunate enough, when the teachers negotiated their contract last year, that we added time to our school day this year. And so with the addition, additional school time and additional student contact time, hourly employees, mostly ESPs, needed to be here when kids were here. So that's a large number of people, and it's every day that they're adding time to their time card. And so that reflects that change. So that's where that change is coming from.
So there was an increase in the school hours?
Yeah.
And what are, what are the hours now?
So it was increased by 25 minutes, so 15 minutes longer in the morning and 10 minutes longer in the afternoon.
And so the school day starts at?
So kids get dropped off at 8:10. We start the date at 25 instead of 8:40. And last year, we ended at 2:55, and we end at 3:05 this year. So that's the two, those two first bigger, you know, chunks of money. There are other ones that reflect a larger percentage, but it's not a larger dollar amount. Obviously, the percentage reflects the change in, you know, proportionally. But we do know that, and we have for a number of years, continue to have a need for permanent subs. Part of the issue with permanent subs, or part of the benefits of permanent subs, is that they're here every day. They know our system, they know our kids, they know all the classrooms, rather than having just someone different every day or not being able to fill those positions, which we know we're in a substitute crisis as it is. So we are proposing that we have additional permanent sub next year.
How do you figure out your need? I understand the premises of why. How do you, what made you decide on one and why not two or three? How do you calculate that?
So one of the other benefits that we have been able to establish over the past couple of years is that our ESPs can also fill in for teachers. So if a teacher is out, that's part of what we do, which is also really beneficial because they know the kids in that classroom really well. And we have to make those decisions every morning. Sometimes an ESP can have the class by themselves, but sometimes there's a need to have two adults in there. So that's where our subs sort of take priority, is to be in a room where you have to have two adults. And right now, we're able to manage it pretty well, although right now, this moment, no, because of sickness, but typical, you know, a typical week or the beginning of the year, we were really in a much better place than we had been. The other piece that feeds into this for us is that we have a number of maternity leaves. We've had several every year since I've been here. We have several this year. We also have several pregnant staff members that will need maternity leave next year. So, or borderline, or trying. So we're in a position of really needing to be conscientious and thinking that so that we're not, you know, having someone that's out for 12 weeks and having a random person or a different person every day. We really want to be thoughtful about that person being a certified teacher, having experience at SMS is really helpful.
If we're talking about reducing a classroom and a classroom teacher, is that a role that a classroom teacher could move over into instead of?
A hundred percent if they wanted to, it would be a substantial.
Decrease.
Change in salary. Yes.
Now, you mentioned that one teacher, you didn't need. Is there any correlation offset between the increase of the helpers to the reduction of maybe the time of the teachers or not? Is there any?
No.
So we didn't help the teacher times at all by increasing helpers?
Can you rephrase that, Lester? I'm not sure I understand.
In other words.
I see what you're saying. The helpers support in our IEP-driven, the Individual Education Plans. So they're in addition to a classroom teacher. They don't replace the classroom teacher. They support either a specific student or a specific need as driven by their individual education plan. That makes sense.
So we've always been short on that IEP?
We always haven't, we haven't been short until the day was longer. So once the instruction increased, then we also had to support the students that were on IEP.
It wasn't an increase in the number of positions, it was an increase in the hours in their day. Right, we didn't hire additional people, we lengthened their school day. Their hours.
Yeah, okay. I think that, a little clarity in that.
Description?
Yeah.
You got it.
Yeah, because, you know, I immediately thought that you hired some helpers.
Got it. I will clarify that they're days lengthened, you got it.
And, you know, the rate of some of the teachers' times also reduced where they could spend more time teaching versus whatever the helper was doing or something.
The good news is that the teachers now have more student contact time and students have more academic engagement time because of the day. That was part of what we were really looking for, and when they were going through negotiations, that was part of that conversation. Because we wanted more time with our kids that was instructional time. So it worked out right nicely.
But what created that?
What created what?
The IEP did create that, so.
No, we created that.
Through negotiations.
Negotiations for the teachers' contracts.
The contract specifically said, I think, 430 minutes, correct? And the teachers were not working 430 minutes. So we negotiated, based on past practice, we had to negotiate that they work the full 430 minutes, which increased the day by the amount of time.
Which also increased the dollar amount.
Needs, yes.
Okay, I mean, that's some of the.
Yeah.
Sure.
Some of the operation behind it, exploiting why just go out there and sign.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
The other piece, when you look on that page again, it's only $2,700. But we do have a need for, as we talked about, some of that benchmarking that we do in the fall. This kind of covers some of that. And then it also supports CPI training, which we talked about, which is Crisis Prevention Intervention Training, which we provide for all of our ESPs. And I would say probably a third of our teaching staff right now, although Kate Belandrew has become a trainer. So we'll be able to train our full staff over time. It just requires lots of professional learning time, and so that will happen slowly over time. So that covers the training, and then it covers their certification, because you have to buy the booklet and buy that sort of stuff. The only other line that I would draw attention to for you guys is the general teaching supplies, and that's just inflation. Inflation is at 8.7%. This is less than that, but it reflects that everything costs us more. The next page at the top are all reductions. Given, part of that was because when we went to tile in a number of rooms, we had to replace some of the, we had to get, like, area rugs and things like that. It was inevitable just because we released, excuse me, replaced the tile. But then, because we knew where we were with the budget and how it was going to be impacted significantly by the insurance GMR, we were really trying to be conscientious about the things that we put into the budget. And we're really fortunate that we're well-resourced. And so oftentimes, we're on a cycle. We're not trying to replace everything at once anyway. So it seemed, given that we were also going to be negotiating the ESP contract, that we could wait that for another year and put that in next year's budget where it wouldn't feel like we were, I mean, it's not going to leave us needing, but it's still going to meet our needs. So the next page, we can go on to the very bottom, and I'll have Selena speak to special education. That's the bottom of two, and then it'll lead into three or 15.
Sure. Draw your attention to actually page three. There's two lines with substantial increases. The first being related services, which is 121050331. We budgeted for an additional 7,000 to cover consultation costs of various experts that we don't have on staff. And the other line that we increased was the tuition for out-of-district placements, which is the 121050563. The cost of out-of-district placements has gone up substantially, and we wanted to make sure that we were covering up to three students because the needs of our kids are becoming more complicated. So we want to make sure that we provide for that eventuality or possibility that a child will go out of district.
Do we have three students doing that now?
We do not.
So do we have? How many?
We have one student.
We have one, so we have room for two more in this budget?
Yes.
Does that feel statistically acceptable, I guess? I don't know what the right question, but I mean, is that, is there enough cover with that increase? Do we think two students is the right number, just so?
I think that's the right number, Ken, and we also have the trust fund in case we have more.
Okay.
We hope to not do that.
Right, sure.
So Selena, in my experience, we only budgeted for the students we knew that we had for the prior year. And then we looked to the trust fund to cover any increases if somebody moved into the district in the year, and we obviously didn't budget for it. So can you speak to the different approach here this year?
I would say that we have certain students that we are concerned about, and we are doing our best to program for them in-house. There is that possibility that we may need to look to another type of school in the event that we're not meeting the needs of known students in the building.
Okay.
So we're basing this estimate on children that we know.
Esther, do you know what the current balance on the trust fund is?
She will have it? She's looking for.
It's just under 480.
480, 490?
Yeah, 481.
481, okay.
And if I could just jump ahead, there's a corresponding cost for the out-of-district placement on page 13. At the very bottom, there's special education transportation. And we increased the budgeted amount there in the event that we have some children out of district. The cost of consultation is high.
Selena, can I just ask you a question? I think we talked about this last time on that, back on three, page three, on related services, some of the additional consultation services. Those were things that we knew we needed so as not to have to place somebody outside of district? Or, just trying to remember what the deal was with some of those additional consultative services?
So we have some students that need the expertise of different types of consultants. So teacher of visually impaired, feeding and swallowing specialist. Sometimes we bring in outside psychologists to help us. So we want to make sure that we have the money budgeted in case we need to hire those folks.
Okay, so this is forward-looking, but not in particular, for a particular case that we're aware of today. But understood.
I should add that since we've had some people out on leave or maternity leave, for example, sometimes we draw upon this line if we have to bring in an outside speech pathologist or an outside OT to cover the leave.
Got it.
Harder to cover than a classroom teacher.
Of course.
How many? So at the very bottom, just to sort of explain, the co-curricular salaries, we used to offer a homework club here in the afternoon. We have not offered it in years. We haven't offered it, we didn't offer it during COVID, for all these reasons, we weren't mixing cohorts. But even prior to COVID, we didn't have attendance. Students just didn't come. I think it's really difficult for families to navigate, and we just didn't have any students coming. So that piece has been removed from the budget. And then the line below that, you'll see a $600 increase. This is really mostly associated with cross-country. The cross-country program has flourished and grown. But in addition to that, the cost of the man, the company that does all the timing, and all of those things have increased for about a total of $600. So this, we would see the increase for that. The next, so on page four.
What's the question?
Of course.
Students pay, families pay.
So this year, they did that originally, and we refunded all the families. Because we didn't use buses. So that is where they had come in. because we didn't use buses. So that is where they had come in. We are still unclear about whether buses will be available or not next year, so it would really depend on whether or not families are. So this year, we were hoping for buses, they weren't available, so we refunded all the families. And then we use it, we have like a student activities account, and we use that to pay for the T-shirts, so families didn't have to pay for the T-shirts either, so families did receive their money back.
Okay.
That is, that was a decision in terms of having families sort of offset some of the cost, was made five years, four years ago, my first year here, five years ago. And it was across the entire SAU, so all the schools did that, there was, school covered part of it, and then the families would cover the other part of it. And they made the decision collectively what that will look like. So then, just really quickly, I know it's a, but just the five thousand dollar increase, sorry, let's do guidance.
That's the public input session.
So we currently have, this year, we have one full-time school counselor, and then we have another school counselor who is here four days a week. The operating budget has only paid for three days a week. We used the Essar funds, Essar three funds, to pay for her fourth day. That is a direct response to the survey that went out to the community, because the community sort of took a survey about what they thought Essar three funds should be used for. And it was academics and then SEL support and services. So we use those funds to pay for her to be a fourth day this year. Those funds won't exist next year, and we would like to make her full-time. So the operating budget would now reflect her going from point six to one point oh. So there'd be the cost of two days. So that's reflected. And then we've been doing a lot of work around our school counseling programs. We've looked at a variety of them, we're still doing that. And to adopt a new program would be roughly around five thousand dollars. So those are the two lines under guidance services. The only other big reduction is under general supplies. And that's because this year, we purchased a new hearing machine, our machine that we use to test students' hearings, which is what we do for all of our students, but it has to be done for students that are going through the special education process.
Vision, vision.
Vision, sorry, vision. We had to replace it, and so next year, we don't have to replace it again. So that's why there's a reduction.
I have a question again.
Yeah.
I think the lines do that.
Let me just bring one.
It comes once a year.
Yeah, and we have to do it in any
Any, or at the time that needs to be done.
Correct.
I used to bring them like weekly in schools, and they don't anymore.
Probably because they cost money. And it was, in addition, when we think about the number of kids that aren't here on that day, and how we do, it really does make sense for us to have the equipment in the building.
In your budget for stuff like that, did, like, you know, we got this inflation thing going on, is that in here anywhere? So if it's a five or something, and it's more expensive?
The entire budget is filled with things that are more expensive than they were. But when we build the budget, we try to get quotes from companies or organizations. And we have been, lots of conversations about, so they're telling us this right now, we suspect it'll be another two or three hundred extras, depending on, say it was something fifteen hundred dollars, we're like, let's put sixteen hundred dollars to be careful, because that's what the past twelve months have shown us around our inflation. So we try to budget like that prospectively, we did it with the food service as well, we used the inflation over the past year to try to better idea what food would cost us next year.
Okay, make that your story.
Okay.
And then, just going back to, I'm assuming it's Rebecca who's going full-time? And so she sees kids one-on-one, and then also goes into, does she go into every single classroom?
So she is
How many students does she?
Yep, so our school counselors do, so one school counselor does preschool through second grade and one third grade classroom. Another one who is here less time does the remaining third grade, all of fourth grade and all of fifth grade. And they, there are really three main components. So there's obviously the class instruction that they do. Then there's small group instruction, and then there's one-on-one services. So the ASCA model around school counseling and one-on-one service services is short, short-term. It is not, that would be our social worker that would be looking at long-term, that would be wrapping around the student, wrapping around the family, maybe had a more complex profile, because they're clinical. School counseling is really like short-term, like, you know, maybe there's a student that had something happen at home that's really challenging, and they need four weeks of support for a half hour once a week for four weeks, that's appropriate. We have, you know, they run some small groups around children from divorced homes, they run small groups around children who are dealing with competition and conflict at recess, like, that's sort of what they would do for small groups. They oftentimes will co-treat or co-service with one of our speech language pathologists working around social pragmatics and how do you build healthy friendships or something like that. So it really changes very, based on what our kids need. They submit surveys to all of our staff pretty regularly and say, Eric, we're about to start another set of social groups or another set of small groups, what are you looking for from your kids? What kids do you recommend? What do you think that they need? And then they're able to build groups that are cohesive or make sense based on their needs.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just going to ask one question if I could, Kate, just going back to the general supplies, it's still page four, fifty six ten, the new guidance curriculum. I'm just curious, is there like a problem we're trying to solve there? Is there like a more, is it outmoded? Was there not something there? I know it's not a big dollar figure, but just curious.
No, so our first year here, we, we worked with a consultant and did sort of a school culture for the students. SEL, there hadn't been anything in place at all for twenty years. And the ASCA model, which is the national organization, really comes sort of, and highly recommended a certain number of programs that meet all the requirements, similar to like a literacy intervention, where they're like, these are the ones that we highly recommend because it includes the science of reading, you know, that kind of stuff. So we had done some of that work, it was with previous school counselors who are no longer here. And now we have two new school counselors who have more experience, well, one of them has a lot of experience. And the programs have changed significantly in the short amount of time. And so this is really about like updating our programming. And it's really all about skill building, you know, like, I was just in preschool with one of the school counselors, they were doing a preschool lesson, and the whole thing was about positive self-talk in order to sustain and focus, sustain focused attention. So it really is about skill building, and there is, there are standards, national standards and benchmarks that we should be doing in our school, and so we're looking for a program that meets that. There are, there is the opportunity, Eric, which we are also exploring. So both ASCA and Ramp, which is another national organization, you can build your own, and then they will evaluate your program and credit it. It is an incredibly taxing process and requires a lot of time and expertise. But the districts that have done it have felt like it fit their, the DNA of their school really well. And then, once it's certified, it means it meets all the expectations and, you know, requirements of a certified program. So that is another option that we're talking about, because we really want it to match the Stratum community, that's really important.
Sort of bespoke.
Yeah. So the biggest change is at the very bottom, we have far less students who require ELL services, and so you'll see a significant reduction in that line. You'll see a significant increase in the top line of page six of fifteen. And that, you'll see specifically what costs, what, under your detailed report. This goes to the data that we were talking about in the metrics
Yeah.
Lester, that we were talking about. So we had data suggested that we needed to review and revamp our mathematical instruction and curriculum. So Ready Classroom was adopted SAU-wide two years ago. And it's a substantial cost to have all the materials and the resources for your entire school kindergarten through fifth grade, so that's reflected there. Additionally, one of the things that we were able to tell from our data is that, and this is particularly important, is that we had some work to do with phonemic awareness and phonics development with our students, and that's also reflected in here. And then handwriting, which was something that SMS had never had a handwriting program, ever in its entire, ever, ever. It was sort of managed because kids were here, and then kids weren't here, and so they didn't develop the writing skills. And what we know about automaticity with writing is that it's required repeated practice. And it's not about so much the formation of the letters, it's the way the synapses fire in your brain, which then makes writing easier for you. Not even necessarily more legible, I mean, that's a benefit of it, but it becomes easier so that, because writing is one of the most complex things children do, because it requires so many different skills. So if we can make that automaticity easier, then the writing, the idea of generating ideas, of formulating complex sentences, of connecting and supporting evidence, becomes easier for children. So that had to be added in, and that's also a cost under curriculum materials.
Now, when you say data, like, what kind of data do you have? I know you're making these good decisions, et cetera, but, you know, what data do you actually have where you could?
Testing data. So they were assessed, students were assessed and benchmarked, and it showed the areas of need of growth and areas that were strong.
So you had X students
Yes.
And you found by this software?
Or the test administered by us as an employee.
Yep.
Okay, that they got that. So that, again, to me, is a story of some percentages that, I keep going back to my first cane where you purchased some software, and you verbally talked about how it gave the teachers more time to teach. And a lot of the students who could go on the computer and do self, et cetera, so to me, I always look for, when I say a metric, a percentage improvement. You know, to say, well, we increased our preacher, our preacher time by ten percent by implementing that software.
Sure.
And we're going to get a return. Okay, and so I'm just saying, to me, metrics is not like how many students you have or
So we, that's what Esther was referring to?
It's the operational. You know, to me, if you control the operation, you just apply a dollar to it, and you get the finance piece.
Right, so what we, what the team presented was the percentage of students that were proficient come now compared to in the fall. And there's a number, a greater number of percentage of students that are proficient in growth than in the fall. So there are, there are already metrics assigned, we can certainly, they're on the webpage, and we can certainly highlight a couple of those
Yeah.
should the board choose to during the presentation to
Right, that's how to make the story, the presentation of why you did what you did type of thing.
Absolutely.
And it sounds like, in this case, this was actually a catch-up, sort of a cost, right? We had to catch the students back up because of the declines of not being in school for almost a year. And so
Someone was definitely in direct, in direct response to, particularly when I talk about phonemic awareness and phonics, that is a direct because that's our youngest kids, right? And so nationally, what they found was with our very, our primary reading and literate text was, took the biggest hit because it requires the most explicit instruction. Where math for our youngest kids is mostly exploratory, so they did very, they stayed pretty steady with mathematics, but literacy really took the hit. Then if you look at grades three and up, it was the exact opposite, because they were already independent readers, usually, most of them by that point. So they could continue to be independent readers and grow their reading, but math becomes much more explicit, and they didn't have that time. So that's where our, that actually shows in our testing results as well, and it matches the national, national trends. I mean, we did far better than a lot of places in the country, but in terms of the same information came out, the trending information was similar.
Yeah, I saw those.
I have just a question on what you just said, because didn't we talk last year, the budget that we're going into COVID was the same as what we had in prior year? I mean, just total spending or something like that, I kind of remember that discussion.
No, it was reduced.
In a lot of cases.
I was kind of questioning
What had happened?
COVID, COVID was really unique at that time, and it was unplanned for. And I think I kind of raised the question, why is that spending equal to our actual, I can't remember.
No, what happened was, we gave back a ton of money the first year of COVID. And what had happened was, is that we kind of, when we went into COVID, we kind of put the budget on a freeze and didn't spend money because everybody was concerned about not knowing what was next. And so it wasn't that it was, it was that we gave back a lot more money, because we didn't spend a lot of what we would have traditionally spent it on, because, well, for example, everything from buses, like, we had a whole half, a third of a year that we didn't have to pay for transportation. So that money went back to the community, and that was where we kind of had, like, it was like confusing just to look at. But it wasn't that we were asking for more or less, we asked for less across the board, it was that we had given back so much more the year before because we'd kind of frozen our budget and said, don't spend because we don't know what's coming. And even the beginning of twenty twenty-one, when we came back, we were still really tentative about our budget, because, well, for two major reasons. We had met with the town, town manager David, and we were trying to be really thoughtful about the tax bills because we were so worried about the families that may not have jobs, that may not have an income. So we were really trying to be conscientious of how much money we might be able to get back at the end of the year of twenty twenty-one as well. Like, we were, and also didn't know what was going to come still at the beginning. So there were two dicey years at the end, and we got a ton of money from the federal government that we could spend, and that we didn't have to spend our operating budget. So there were a lot of factors about, it looked like we weren't spending money, we were, we were spending it from the federal government and being really thoughtful at the beginning of the year, because we didn't know what laid ahead of us. So it was like a, hard to like explain, but there were a myriad of factors that influenced it at the time. I remember that being a conversation last year when we were here as well. We also didn't have the COVID data really till the end of last year to understand like what we really needed. We had to spend the year collecting, you know, our first full year back and being in school every day, really gave us more information.
Kate, what page are you on now?
Six of fifteen. The only other thing I would draw your attention to on six of fifteen, you go down to twenty-two, twenty-five, the technology coordinator. So in my time here with HET three, it's a very difficult position to fill and keep. Oftentimes, because they are paid significantly more in the IT world, right, they're going to be paid in a school district. The second part of that is that when we were unable to fill the position this year, we've been unable to fill the position. We have offered it to a number of people who, when they found out the salary, did not want the job. And so we've been working really close with Steve Garvin from SAU and Steve Gaggen, our Steve, Mr. G. And sort of shifting or thinking differently about Mr. G's responsibilities, and he's been able to do a great job collaborating with some of our ESPs, collaborating with administration, and really been able to take on some of this and put it under his umbrella, wanting to do that. He wants more control of it, because he does have such a good handle on what the needs are and how he can grow the whole school's program. So as we were talking about filling this position, I'll be thinking more of it as like an assistant tech coordinator versus tech coordinator. So we budgeted more for that position than a full tech coordinator. So you'd see a reduction in that line as well.
Still full FTE?
It would hope to be a full FTE, yes.
Yep.
And part of that, because over the summer, it would be more like just cleaning the hardware, stuff like that. It wouldn't be, the summertime would be not a lot, it would be more like, I'm collecting on the technology, we're going to clean it, we're going to read it, we're going to start it, or we're going to order some Yeah.
Yeah, do the projects in the summer.
Yeah, and there's no engagement at that point with other staff or even students, they're kind of in their space doing their thing.
Do you guys do like a census for salaries in this range, and you feel like you can get somebody that's like a desktop support type individual?
I think, I think so. We, that's what we looked around at, like comparables, and it feels like, because it would be such an assistant position, we feel like it could be plausible, yeah. And that's closer to what we had had the previous years.
Yeah.
Page seven of fifteen, everything is flat, because when you get to page eight of fifteen, and you get to equipment, that is where you see the biggest change. There are a couple significant factors that played into that. Part of it is the Chromebooks that we have been talking about. So the Chromebooks are really supposed to be a three-year lifespan. But many of them are not making close to three years based on COVID, they just have wear and tear. You're buying Chromebooks for typically, you know, maybe an hour, two hours a week use, and this was just very different. So we need to replace those for a grade level, and then our ESPs haven't had new Chromebooks in five years. And they need Chromebooks that actually function. So that's part of that. Then you have your staff, which is classroom teachers and specialists, get a Dell laptop. Of course, just keeping up with our iPad recycling. And then new line is all of the projection software that has to be replaced in the classrooms, and that's why it's thirty-three, I guess, or do thirty-two. If you guys approve the budget as a reduction of one classroom teacher, where it says thirty-three new line, it would go to thirty-two, because it would reflect the number of classrooms.
Can you talk a little bit about just the projector swap, like, what's driving that?
Yeah, so currently, the projectors in our building are similar to the one you see up there, Eric. They're like Epson projectors that are on the ceiling, so they are not touchscreen, which is really important in a school, because it's interactive and it engages the students. And it's also great for a number of students that might have some accommodations, so it really accommodates that. Additionally, they don't universally work with all different types of Chromebooks, iPads, Macs, they don't have that adaptability as frequently. And they're different in all of our rooms. So if I have a issue in room, you know, two Y, I might be able to go in and solve that, but I might not then be able to go into two L and do the same thing, because it's totally different, and they're all well outdated. So it really is all updating on all of them, that are all also wireless and work off the teacher's laptop or the teacher's iPad seamlessly, where we don't have any of those capabilities right now.
Do we have anybody that does like reclamation, that provides credits for any of this stuff, or do we have to pay them to get this stuff out of here?
Usually our tech department
Does it?
Takes some, it's not a cost, it's not an additional cost, they'll take it.
Yeah, we don't pay for the installation piece, they, they're awesome.
Okay, but they don't try to salvage anything or anything like that?
They've tried, but still no, no market.
Yeah, just thing with supply chain stuff. Hey, just one quick question on, because we've got, I ready. Yeah, just things with supply chain stuff. Hey, just one quick question on, because we've got iReady on the math for the, like, as technology, but then we had a iReady for curriculum. Can you just describe the difference of what?
Yep. So the iReady that you saw in curriculum is the student work texts, the teacher materials. The iReady under the software is the benchmarking test software. So that they do it three times a year. That's what that is.
And Kate, I have a question about equipment. We had a lot of smart boards a few years ago in the rooms. Are we not using those?
So we still have some of them. And that's what I mean by like, they're all different in the different rooms. But because they're so old that they're not actually interactive anymore. So they can project, a little cloudy, but they don't have the interactive capabilities because they're so old.
The smart boards are really okay.
Yeah. Um, I'm trying to think. I think we have four left. I want to say we have four remaining smart boards.
That are still operational.
Yeah.
And, and we're replace, or, excuse me, we are, the proposal is to replace them with what?
It's called New Line. So they're actually, um, they look very different. So what you would see in our rooms right now, the smart boards are like clunky, big, giant things. These actually almost look like a flat screen TV. They're like flush with the wall. They're all touchscreen. We have one upstairs in the maker space right now. I wish I could bring it down. I could try to bring it down for the next meeting, Heidi, or take you guys up to see it. So they are much more, um, portable. They're just, they're just a totally different, totally different company. Three of our elementary schools have already transitioned over to them. So we actually sent some teachers to go experiment with them, try them so that we could see if it felt like something would be workable here. Um, so that's kind of where we're at with those. We'd actually, um, thought about using some of our unexpected funds at the end of last year to get probably like 10 or 15 in the building. I think we're going to do two grade levels, but then as you know, we ended up where we ended up last year.
Maybe building off of Heidi's question, is there any overlap between the touchscreen projector and the smart boards? There's not.
Technology is so, I mean, you know how fast it's evolving. It's so different. Yeah. I mean, like I can give you an example, the Chromebooks that we're replacing right now in second grade, we just replaced the whole grade level. Their previous Chromebooks opened like a laptop. They didn't open all the way. Half the cameras worked, half didn't. They weren't touchscreen. This year we were, and so if you think about the transition, first grade is iPads. They go to second grade, they no longer have an iPad. So all they're used to is touchscreens. And then they go to our second grade, which are Chromebooks that were not, and they didn't fold. So they weren't portable. And now like, that's just how much technology changes in three years. There isn't, and they're, I mean, we're talking about Apple or any other. They don't want to be in battle with someone else because they want to make the money, unfortunately. It's like our phone system.
What, what I heard at the very beginning was that we spent, uh, whether costs went up because we had to replace a lot of hardware. Okay. What, what percentage is of the spending is hardware? And is there any percentage of software that would be also improving? I just heard from the hardware piece that you could literally do a study and say, by going to this newer technology, this touch.
So if you look on the previous page, Lester, seven of 15 is the lines for software. So AV Materials is a lot of our software. I'm sorry, software licenses. So that is the software. That's flat because we, we're really fortunate in our district. We have a thing called catch on that we have across the entire SAU that monitors when we use our software and when we don't and how long we use it, what grade levels use it, what teachers use it, which we didn't have. This is brand new to us two years ago. So it really helped us shape what software we're going to keep working with and what we're not. So for example, some of the software requires that you buy an entire building license. You can't buy for just one teacher. So one teacher is sometimes like 50 bucks, but if the whole building might be 3,000. But if only two teachers are using it, we're not doing that. Find a better software or comparable software that multiple teachers are going to use, and then it makes sense to spend the money. So for example, catch on costs us money, but it saves us a ton of money over time. So we have those metrics.
That's what I heard. Okay. Is what you just said, okay, is if we purchased this software, we could get so much of the metric efficiency improvement. Okay. If we, if we could just take that feeling and put it into some numbers, percentage or something like that. I mean, it's a no brainer because we need to keep investing in software and hardware in this type of scenario. I just remembered four years ago, you were rallying off some significant improvements just by implementing software.
I can, yeah, I will add that to the.
So if you could add the software component, hardware component, what you're seeing, and that justifies why you want to spend that much money.
You got it.
Okay.
I think it's helpful too, just to that point, just trying to figure out what of the stuff got beat, what stuff just got beat up. Like I think a lot of the parents will note that happened. Yeah. I mean, I bought a Chromebook during that period of time. It's, it's pretty well beat up. But just trying to understand how much of it is just advanced replacement cycle because of the wear and tear might just be helpful to explain that to those.
I don't have anything to fucking the rest of it. It's really all contractual stuff. It's not even, we have any ability to influence.
Kate, that's probably most of that 5734, right? It's the, like the Chromebooks.
I'm sorry, Eric, what page do you want?
Just back to that, because I can probably answer my own question on that, right?
Yeah.
Really just that line.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Save the projectors, which is the really a feature add and standardization.
Yeah, it is replacement of the equipment that is just outdated and no longer supports the education system.
It's not insignificant stuff.
No, it's not. It's definitely not. So I don't, unless you find another line in specific, like I think it's all pretty self-explanatory for the rest of the lines.
The only line I'd just like to highlight for folks is on page 14 to 15 at Health Insurance. They reckon it's a 15.60 MROG trade. That number over there is a big number to change. Just it's contractual, but it is a big number to charge and that had to increase.
Any questions through the custodial piece? If you had any questions about that. All of that is either based on new quotes from companies because things have gone up or based on the increase that we even saw last year and weren't prepared for because things changed so much last year. It is just, I mean, everything from paper towels to soap, all of those things to then services, everything is just exponentially, exponentially more. Yeah.
I did just a quick calculation. I looked at last year's per student budget costs. To add 8%, roughly the inflation you're going to get to this year's numbers, with the exception of just a couple adds that you did. So just putting it all in the context.
Pretty tight. This budget is pretty tight. Really, the only areas that are non, that are non-contractual are the tech that you've just been discussing. That's really about it.
I feel like, I can't speak to any time before, so I feel like we work really hard to be really tight with our budget and physically responsible because we want to answer to whatever we spend. And I think we do that in conjunction with really wanting to provide high quality, excellent education in response to what our data is telling us. And I feel like if we were to look back at the last four years, I think we did a really good job of trying to do that. If we can take out the COVID pieces that made it complicated, but to look at what we said was our focus and our priority and where we put our money. It has been aligned the entire time. We've been prioritizing, we had talked about math specialist for three years before we put it in because other things came ahead of it. We had a fourth administrator or curriculum coordinator for a, for a number of years. And then with this current administration and with the expertise and the work that we're doing in our classrooms and helping build, build capacity, we realized we didn't need that. So I feel like we're constantly thinking big picture, but then also what does that mean to the day-to-day operations of the, of the school?
Anybody else have questions? Kate, would you prefer that people try to get questions to you ahead of time if they, if they come up?
Yeah, it's helpful. In the past, I think, Heidi, did they reach out to you and then you sent me the group of questions or did, um, from the FAC?
Yeah, we met. That's what it is. And we sent questions up to you.
Perfect.
So Lester and I can get together and.
Perfect.
I think it was nice if there was one email coming from one person to Kate, then she doesn't miss anything. If there was three people, it's easier to miss one. But if you have all of them in one document, that's super helpful.
And then the board can do the same thing. You just want to send me an individual email or send them all to Kate, then Kate can send them to me. You just don't want to send an email with everybody's. But yeah, if you have specific questions, then I can come prepared. Or if I need to sign some backup material from four years ago, I can try to do that to try to answer something that I might not know off the top of my head.
Okay, perfect. That sounds good.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments or anything or?
Just a reminder, the next Wednesday is the six to seven review. So if you do have time and you want to have questions and all that, it would be great if you could get them to take them like Monday, so there's time to prep, to bring the answers Wednesday.
Sounds good next.
Yeah, that's a six to seven and then that's followed by regular.
All right, oh, go ahead.
So what were some of the, all these other metrics that you intertwined in the process of just because?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think a lot of it was the growth data. A lot of it was academic based in math and science and reading. So we have the state, the SAS, which is the state assessment. We also have the iReady for math and ELAs that they use that measure growth. They also do classroom-based, teacher-driven assessments. So they kind of correlate, triangle, right? Three points, data points to drive what you've seen in here. At the SEL, we do have what's called LUDESA, which is a universal screening for SEL needs in the building. And it just categorizes kids in like red, green and yellow, high needs being red, you know? And so based on an increase in services, there's a higher percentage of green as the year goes on because we deliver services based on what the students need. A lot of it is around decision-making or how to advocate for yourself, right? How to ask a teacher a question, how to be in a group. So recognizing that those can cause anxieties with kids and then the learning doesn't happen. So we also have to address, do you know how to ask a question when you, when you're, when you're not sure in a classroom setting? Do you know how to make friends at recess? Do you, those kinds of things? So we use that metric too around SEL. Kate spoke a little bit about that. I don't know if there's anything else off the top of my head that you want to add, Kate?
No, I think what the data really showed us was we didn't have a significant increase in the number of students in tier three, which is what is the students with the highest needs. We didn't see a significant increase there. It was really that middle body of students that really needed eight, 12 weeks of intervention because they had some gaps or had missed something or needed more practice with some explicit instruction. And so that's what the data showed us. And that's where, when you have a program that offers continuity, the universal instruction, it reduces your percentage of tier two kids, which is our goal right now. So the metrics showed us that was our biggest, the largest place that showed the most significant change. And so that's where we addressed our work.
And there are actually kind of two presentations. The way I kind of think of this, there was the one in the spring that was around what metrics they're collecting across all facets of the school. And then the other one was in October, which was really a readout of where we are using those metrics as a sort of over time. That's the way I think.
Yeah, the, the spring was much more comprehensive view of like all of the different measures and why we use them and what it shows us. And then the one in October is we did our fall assessments and it showed us the actual data from our students in this fall. So it was two things.
And there's, there were deliverables that came out of that. So we had presentations. We have things that we can make available to the community or we can draw from some of that for the budget purposes, to your point.
Kate, a couple of questions about enrollment. What is your projected kindergarten enrollment for next year?
So we don't know. We haven't, we haven't, we open up in January, so we're not really sure. This year's kindergarten class, I think it's 81. Does that sound right? It's about 81. It has been pretty consistent the past couple of years.
Five classrooms or six?
It's five classrooms. So we have five classrooms in kindergarten, first, second, third. We have six classrooms, fourth grade. That was the bubble class that I think the first year we were together. And then our fifth grade is currently five classrooms as well. So next year, when that fourth grade group goes to fifth grade, they do not need six teachers. Five teachers will be sufficient. And that's where we chose to see the cut, I mean, not the person, but the cut would be there.
Oh, so you have six.
In fourth grade.
Kindergarten.
Nope.
Five.
Five kindergarten classrooms. Yeah.
16 kids.
16 is.
Oh, sorry. And the bubble class had six all along.
Yes, you got it. Yeah.
Do you, since you've been here for a while now, do you notice, and we've got sort of two or at least a year and a half of anomaly there, but do you notice any kind of trend where maybe the kindergarten class is small, smallish? And then there's sort of an increase for first or second grade because parents were pulling kids out of like a private kindergarten program and then they enroll them here for first or second.
And every year that we've been here, minus the first COVID year 2021, we always have between seven and like 11 new first grade kids because they do private kindergarten or they do their kindergarten where they did their preschool.
So just for first grade.
Yeah, we don't see it in second grade typically. Usually as they join us in first grade after having done private kindergarten. And I feel like that's always been the case anywhere I've worked. I think that's pretty typical. A lot of people, they have their child there for preschool and they love it. And they finish their kindergarten year there. I do think when this, most of the state moved to full day kindergarten, we saw less and less of that happening because I think a lot of families wanted full day kindergarten. Now that most public schools have it, it's less of those percentage of kids that join in first grade.
I'd say there's like trends in birth order. Like right now, our kindergartners, a lot of them are older siblings. So that's good job security, right? Like who's got more coming? So I would say a year or two ago, they were all the youngest sibling of three. And now they're almost, a good collection of them are the oldest sibling and have several under them. So that helps us to kind of look in the future. But you guys have that information from the forms that the parents fill in when they come in. So you actually know that they're, most of these kids or a lot of them are.
We know they're siblings. Yes. And we know like.
And they'll tell you.
Their, their younger twin sisters are in four, they're four. So they'll be here, like we kind of have that information, but it doesn't give us a big enough number to say like, we think we're in the 80 ballpark. Yeah.
We just know, we'll still be.
Doris.
So how's the health of this building?
Thirty years.
It's 32 years old, 33 years old.
A year ago, there was some type of studies.
That's been done. Yep. The board.
And where were we with that?
Sure. So the board has a subcommittee, the building. Do you want to speak to it, Jennifer, or I shouldn't speak for you?
Sure. Yeah. So we met, we've met a bunch of times with staff within the school. And then we brought in a few people from outside who kind of helped with the CMS project. And we've looked at a couple of different options by Banwell, which I think you've seen, where they supplied some, uh, three different sketches with what they thought about doing with the building, some changes that they wanted to make. And at this point, what's happening is the board has given some feedback on those three drawings. And now over the holidays, we're going to actually tour a few schools that we can drive to that have done some recent renovations or completely new buildings to get some ideas. And then in the spring, hopefully we'll get some updated drawings from the architects.
Some of it's like reconfiguring what we have and some of it's in addition.
So are, up here, so we're really looking forward to trying to do something and make this building.
So the next.
Because it's been kicked down or kicked down the road year after year, after year, after year. And we've been putting very little in the warrant article. And last year we did put more than we ever had because the concept was the taxpayers are not going to pay for it. I remember Joe basically saying the millions of dollars that they've been putting into the municipal center, just so we have a municipal center, we should be putting it in the school here. So I really encouraged the board, you know, to really push, what, what do we need and how do we plan for it? Because my understanding is a lot of things are breaking or going to break and, you know, a 37-year-old building is, uh, not good.
So one of the things we learned through this process, Lester, was that there's sort of a process that you go through with the state in order to request aid as a building aid process. And the next cycle is in 2025. So we're trying to align our work with that in hopes that we might be able to get some building aid. I don't think any one of us feels like it's super promising. I don't want to lead you down a road. We're like, oh, we're assured that. But it behooves the board, I think they made the decision, we all agreed that like, it makes sense to try to get it. Even if we don't, it's the right thing to do to request it. So we're lining up our work with that so that it could align with that process. So if we're fortunate enough to get it, we would also then have our schematics ready, have the, you know, the, not only the architects, but then also like the civil engineers and all that lined up at the same time. So there's a lot of thought going into aligning this at a time that is appropriate financially, as well as where the town is ready to do that. I feel like there's been lots of conversation.
Initial presentations at the boards, if you look at the minutes, I can also get you the timeline that we're sort of looking at.
Okay. I just, I just want to make awareness to the taxpayers because that was the reason why they weren't doing anything. Because they didn't figure that it would be approved, you know, and it wasn't really, I'd say, they'd known of the then the eternal sir, oh, we've got our furnace is going to be breaking down. We have it back up. We, we need this, we need that and everything. And I'm saying, come forward and, 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 you know, because the taxpayers are also going to pay. And I think they was supportive, but it was always, it was kind of like, you know, keep it here, but not put it on a table to the taxpayers. So I, you know, be real open on it because I think we do need to put some money in this building here.
Well, and I think we're lucky that we have a lot of lessons learned with CMS. And so I think we can incorporate some of those.